We will call this meeting to order. Please have the city clerk read the remote meeting instructions.
Pursuant to Governor Enslay's emergency proclamation regarding suspending certain provisions. Excuse me, of the Open Public Meetings Act during the COVID-19 outbreak, the Toppenish City Council will not be accepting in-person public comments. All members of the public wanting to comment on City Council agenda items may submit written comments to include your name and address for the record in advance by email to Heidi Riojas at cityoftoppenish.us by 4:00 PM on September 28, 2020 to be read during the meeting. To remotely attend the Toppenish City Council regular meeting, select Join a Meeting, Meeting After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining the meeting. Call-in information for listen-only mode is 253-215-8782. Meeting ID 873-2772-2127. Passcode 532927. Email Heidi Riojas at cityoftoppenish.us or call 509-865-6754 with questions.
Thank you. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can get the city clerk to please do the roll call.
Mayor Oaks.
Here.
Mayor Protem Savedra.
You're muted.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Belton.
Here.
Councilmember Seha.
Here.
Councilmember Duval.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Present.
Let the record show we have full attendance and a forum.
Good. We'll move to item three, approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the agenda in its entirety.
And I'll second that. Nyla.
Yes. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Jimenez and seconded by Councilwoman Duval to approve the agenda for tonight. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any oppose? Moving on to item four, advanced public comments received by 4:00 PM on September 28, 2020 to be read by staff at the meeting.
Mayor Oaks, let the record show the city did not receive public comment by the deadline stated.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, the proclamation. Item A is Memorial Proclamation honoring Yakima County Commissioner Norm Childress. The City of Toppenish Memorial Proclamation, whereas the Toppenish City Council is deeply saddened by the passing of Yakima County Commissioner Norm Childress on September 15, 2020, and whereas Governor Enslay approved the lowering of the Washington State and United States flags at half-staff on Yakima County facilities on September 25, 2020 in memory of County Commissioner Childress, and whereas County Commissioner Anderson and Baker encourage other local governments, entities to join the recognition on September 25 by lowering the flags at half-staff until closing of the business or sunset. And whereas in memory of the long history of public service of County Commissioner Childress, the flags at all City of Toppenish public buildings were lowered to half-staff on September 25, 2020, and whereas Commissioner Childress was the epitome of a loyal and honest public servant that others needed to emulate to continue his efforts to benefit the residents and businesses or communities in Yakima County dated this 28th day of September, 2020. Guess with that being said, we'd move on to our consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda have been provided to each council member for review and are considered to be routine or have been previously discussed and will be adopted by one motion and vote without discussion. However, if a council member desires, any item on this agenda will be discussed before any action is taken on it. Item 6A, approve the minutes of September 14, 2020, regular council meeting. 6B, accept financial report and quarterly investment report. Item 6C, approve payroll checks numbered 35055 through 35066 and the electronic transfer in the total amount of $239,552.90 dated September 21, 2020. 6D, approve claim check numbers 92564 through 92624 and the electronic transfer in the total amount of $341,224.99 dated September 28, 2020. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda in its entirety.
I second that.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Belton, I believe seconded by Mayor Protem Savedra to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any oppose? Hearing none. Moving on to new business. Item 7A, AB 20-047, Resolution 2020-48, approve Wysh dot local agreement and Wysh dot project pursuant for the Train Depot Rehabilitation Project. Whatever. City Manager Hoyt.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is Resolution 2020-48 that deals with the Train Depot Rehabilitation Project and Public Works Superintendent Rocky Wallace is here, I think. I think he's there. Are you online, Rocky?
I am.
Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to discuss the Train Depot Roof Rehabilitation Project. This portion is to approve the preliminary or the local agency agreement and the project prospectus for the preliminary engineering. The biggest thing on this one is we applied or City Manager Hoyt was approved to apply for the Surface Transportation Block Grant set-aside dollars to replace the Train Depot roof during the March 23, 2020 regular council meeting. The city was successful and was awarded $355,000 from the Yakima Valley Conference of Governments. The funding is 100% grant. So the funding is as follows. The preliminary engineering total is going to be $57,100. The construction total will be $297,900, and the project total is equals that $355,000. There is no city match required for this project. It is 100% grant. And so the fiscal impact for this is 105,000 was included in the 2020 budget. Based on the city's acceptance of the STB set-aside grant, the fiscal impact results in the savings of 105,000 for the 2020 budget. Staff's recommendation is a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-48. Are there any questions?
Move to approve Resolution 2020-48.
I second that.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Belton and seconded by Mayor Protem Savedra to approve Resolution 2020-48, approve Wysh dot local agreement or local agency agreement and Wysh dot project for the Train Depots Rehabilitation Project. Any further discussion? All in favor signify aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, moving on to 7B, AB 20-048, revised site design for new Public Works Building and paving. City Manager Hoyt.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight is an approved site, uh, site design for the public workshop. For the last year and a half, we've been working with BNSF to acquire a lease for ingress egress on a railroad right-of-way road as was going to be basically 30 feet wide, 600 feet long, in accordance with their requirements to be 25, I think 25 or either 50 feet away from a railroad line. And on top of that or on the side of that, 15 feet of that was going to be requested for a 12-inch water main to be placed within that 30 feet for the same length. We started last year with BNSF. They were positive attitudes and said, yeah, would be a good thing. We went to the second level. It was still okay. We went to the third level. We were denied. At the fourth level, we made a, an appeal and a pitch for the positives of the, to share that road, traffic safety, water line for industrial water there. They came back and basically denied the, the water line first because if, if a 12-inch water main were to burst, it might flood or wash out a rail line and a train could tip over in that spot. So they've, they've denied that access for a water line. We anticipate they're going to do the same thing for the road. So what we've done is we've asked Wes Edwards from, uh, we'll spit it out, from Bora Architector to redo the site plan, moving the Public Works Building over where it was going to be in its original site, move it over to be where the existing Safe Haven building is now. And then that would be the new ingress egress for Public Works off of Washington. And basically, that's what we have for that. I don't know if, do we have the ability to look at the, the documents? They were included in your packet. There's two, there's two maps there kind of showing those differences. I don't see any maps showing up, so are there any questions that we can answer for you? We have Stephanie Ray for HLA for our 12-inch water line improvement as well as Wes from Bora. Oh, there they are. Surprise, there they are. That's the, the new configuration that we plan to move to. And you can see, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sure on everybody's mind and we've, a lot of us have already heard, but for the public, what kind of cost estimate do we have here? Is there negative or positive either way?
At this point, I think there's some savings with water lines. There might be a little more due to square footage of asphalt because we're switching it around. So basically, it's, it's pretty much the same, I, I think, but, but the biggest issue will be if and when we go to add and what type of bid requirements or bid results we get. If it comes in higher than our, than we have money for, we may have to reduce some asphalt square footage.
This is Wes Edwards. We're also looking at some slight modifications just to push the buildings, the new buildings a little further into the site to reduce that amount of asphalt as well. We're trying to, and this site plan also includes an alternate access for writing right out only of the U and away that may or may not be feasible. And so there's a few areas where we'll be cut back and offset, bring that much closer to work to break even basically from six months ago.
Thank you.
I was surprised to see so many drainage swells. Is there a reason why we have so many or is that just typical? Because I think we have like five of them throughout that facility.
I'll let Stephanie with HLA speak to that.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So the drainage swells proposed are too multifaceted, but they're mainly to accommodate sheet-flow drainage. What we are trying to avoid is the addition of catch basins on the site. Catch basins and piping add additional costs. So we are looking at grading options that are conducive to just surface swell. So that's why you see so many surface swells on, on the edges of the asphalt. Kind of think about it as, you know, a typical parking lot has no curbs and the drainage just flows right off on the edge into the grassy area. And that's what we're looking to do here, too. These swells would be rock lines. We would not plant them with grass, so it would, it'd also be non-arrogated. They're only just to capture storm water that's generated on that, that roadway and asphalt parking lot and then infiltrate it.
Grass anywhere?
What's that?
Is there going to be grass anywhere on that area or is it all asphalt?
Uh, the majority of the site will be asphalt or gravel and someone is holding a cursor over there by the used-in-water tank area. Grass will remain up in that upper northwest corner of the site. Then also up near the new building over by Safe Haven, there'll be grassy areas and all of that will be landscaped aesthetically for, for the building, but also, also the goal is to reduce maintenance costs and irrigation.
Yes, we'll have, we'll let all the streets front end along Washington, Buena, will be landscaped, there'll be, but anything behind the fence line where the vehicles will be doing their work or being stored, there'll be a large amount of gravel and painting beyond that. The public space will have a presentable landscape, but low maintenance.
It looks like there's more parking now, too. Am I, is that my right?
We have the same number of parking stalls in this site layout as we had previously. The old site plan, I don't know if Lance has that available, but the public parking was between the building and the water tower. Over off of Buena Way there. We have the same number of stalls now and then we have the employee parking is just located in a different location than before, so the actual number of parking stalls is the same. But we, but we will not, the, the one thing that this site does is currently this Safe Haven building has parking perpendicular to the street right at the curb and that will go away. The, it'll just park right off of Washington, perpendicular to the building, you'll have to pull into the site and park inside the lot.
So then, does that mean you're taking away the basketball court, handcourt area?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So we would like to have a, a motion to amend the, to adopt the new revised Public Works Site Design for the Public Works Building and Utilities.
Move to approve AB 20-048, Revised Site Design for New Public Works Building Utilities and Paving.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Belton, seconded by Councilwoman Duval to approve the, AB 20-048, revised site design for new Public Works Building Utilities and Paving. Any further discussion? All in favors signify by aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving on to 7C. November 23, 2020 as a date for a public hearing for reviewing sources and the 2021 tax levy. City Manager Hoyt.
Thank you, Mayor. And I believe Interstate Services Director Debbie Zabel is here to discuss these next three items.
I think she's right there. Debbie?
Here I am. Hi. So good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are going to set the dates for the public hearings, the three public hearings that we are required to provide. The first one being for the revenue sources that also includes the 2021 tax levy. And the next one is for the public hearing for the proposed budget and then the final approval of the final budget. And the three dates that we have scheduled for you are November 23 for both the public hearing for the revenue sources and the tax levy, as well as the first public hearing for the proposed 2021 preliminary budget. The next one would be for December 7 is for the public hearing regarding the proposed final 2021 budget. And this was included on the budget calendar that was submitted to council previously. Or is there any question about these dates? Or if not, if we can go ahead and council could establish those dates, that would be great.
Is it just the two dates, Debbie? I think I missed one.
Yes, it's two dates. We have two public hearings on one date. On November 23, we have two public hearings back to back.
Okay, what time will those be at?
Well, they, they're at our regular council meetings, so probably like 7:05 or 7:07, somewhere around there.
Okay, and the December 7 will be?
In the, well, sorry?
December the 7th will be in the, in the evening as well at 7?
Yes, yes.
No. No.
Point of order. Study session?
Yes.
Thank you. So that one would be at 5 during study session.
Okay.
Do we need to adopt those separately?
And I have another question. Do you think that at that time, the hearings will be held in person? Do you know?
Don't know.
I, I would be doubtful of that considering that we, we can't open until Phase 3. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of doubtful that will be to Phase 3 by then. Maybe, maybe we can cross our fingers for December 7, but I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
Add entertain a motion for item 7C.
Well, I move to approve, to set the November 23, 2020 as a date for the public hearing for revenue sources and the proposed 2021 preliminary budget.
We're, we're doing them one at a time.
Yeah. We're doing them separately.
We're all separate.
Or do I need to state each one?
Yes.
One, yeah.
Okay. I just said one.
Yeah. Item C.
Uh huh.
I'll, I'll second her motion for item C.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Mayor Protem Savedra, seconded by Councilman Belton to set November 23, 2020 as a date for public hearing for revenue sources and the 2021 tax levy. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to 7D, entertain a motion. To?
Motion to set the November 23, 2020 date as the first public hearing for the proposed 2020 preliminary budget.
2021.
Yeah, 2021.
2021 preliminary budget, sorry.
I'll second that.
George. I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Duval and seconded by Councilwoman Garcia to November 23, 2020 as date for the first public hearing regarding proposed 2021 preliminary budget. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any oppose? Hearing none, moving I to, on to 7E, set December 7, 2020 as date for public hearing regarding the proposed financial 2021 budget. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we go ahead and set December 7, 2020 as the date for the public hearing regarding the proposed final 2021 budget.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Jimenez, seconded by Councilwoman Duval to set December 7, 2020 as a date for the public hearing regarding the proposed final 2021 budget. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any oppose? Hearing none. Moving on to item eight. Council meeting reports and community announcements. Mayor Protem Savedra.
I have nothing to report for the good of the order.
Councilwoman Duval.
Uh, can you skip me really quick? I'm pulling up what I want to report.
Okay, we'll move on to Councilman Garcia.
Nothing to report.
Councilman Belton.
Nothing for the good of the order.
Councilman Seha.
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Jimenez.
I'd like to report that I did attend the Conference of Government meeting that was held on September 16. It was the one where you have your legislative individuals, your elected officials come and give the state of the state and state of the nation kind of talk. And the, we had Congressman Dan Newhouse was there, a very helpful man. Again, worried about the budget. And then for the state of Washington, we had a number of representatives there and they too are worried about our state budget. So pretty much everything was about budget and also people worried about sending their kids back to school. So that was a topic of discussion. But the, what I really want to share for the public is that Representative Bruce Chandler mentioned how some people have made applications for their unemployment benefits and that people are having issues with getting their checks because of whatever problem that they have. And he said, and I quote, "We are trying to help to get their unemployment benefits. All they have to do is call his office and, and if they need any help at all in getting their unemployment benefits, he and his staff are there to help them." He said they've helped a number of individuals that usually the turnaround time for the individuals that they're, that they are helping has been like it would take a day or two and it was resolved. He said mostly the problem was they hit the wrong button or they put in the wrong number or the wrong whatever. So he said every one of the individuals who, who have called his office, they have been able to get their benefits to them ASAP. So if there's anybody out there in the public who has issues or problems getting their unemployment benefits, I give Bruce Chandler a call and he or his staff will help. unemployment benefits, I give Bruce Chandler a call and he or his staff will help you get your unemployment benefits. So that's all I have to share.
Thanks, thank you, that's pretty big. Councilwoman Deval.
Yes, I wanted to let the public know that our library is open again. They are open for contact free pickups, so you can hold and make reservations for what you want to check out online and you can get more information at the Yakima Valley Libraries online. On Tuesdays, they're open from one to five thirty. On Thursdays, they're open from one to five thirty again and on Saturday, it's from ten to one thirty. That's everything.
Very good. I have nothing to report, so we'll move on to the city managers' reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got some items to to share with council. First off, the the memorial proclamation that the mayor read in honor of Norm Childress's public service, that'll be signed and an original will be sent with a condolence card to the Childress family, we'll do that tomorrow. So thank you for that. A little update on the census, it has been extended another month, so it'll go through October now, that's another month to to sign up. The state of Washington is, let's see, where is that number? Those numbers change on me, but we're about sixty two percent in the state overall and Toppinish is fifty six point eight percent. So we have about another forty. Forty three percent of us that haven't filled out the census, so if you know anyone that hasn't filled out their census or if you haven't taken the time, please do so, that affects everything from political representation in our state legislature down to. Anything you can think of that has to do with funding from school funding to. It affects everything that we get. So the higher the the number, the the better will be for everybody in the long run. I have a. A. Whatever you call it, a connection, not a connection, but. A deal that I could send to you that everybody could go ahead and look at, so you could watch that as it grows or doesn't grow. It's a IT website that you could click on, so that'll be coming. Thursday, I'll be attending the also Thursday, I'll be attending the two percent committee, it's finally going to get ready to go forward. They have fourteen applications, of course, we don't know how much money that they'll be advertised, they'll be giving out that were affected by the casino activities. We're hoping to get our third of four installments for our ladder truck. That's what we're hoping to do. So there's a lot of applications to review there to be ready for that process. The third thing I have or the fourth thing I have is I got an email from Jonathan Smith from Y C D A this today. And to date, or as of ten o'clock this morning, we had ninety eight small businesses applicant for our CARES Act small business money assistance. So we were really surprised that we got that many. In that email, I sent it out to council. In the body of the email, there was the. The scoring protocol that they use that they use for Yakima County, Yakima City, Grandview and the like, it's a way to to make things fair for the larger business as well as the smaller businesses. And so I gave everybody a call today to give them an opportunity to review that. I would. Like to ask council for. I guess a motion to approve the testing protocol for Y C D A to go forward and and rank. However, many applications that we're going to have by the close of tomorrow evening.
You want for the scoring?
Yes, the scoring protocol. What they'll do is they'll use this scoring protocol like they did on the other application processes, they'll go through, they'll they'll check, let's say, the ninety eight applications. If if they they didn't qualify, they'll get a letter saying, sorry, you didn't qualify. The ones that did qualify will be ranked, they'll give us a a ranked list on probably the week of the fifth through the ninth of October and then we'll know what businesses were successful.
So Lance, for the viewing public, you mentioned to be fair for the large businesses and the small businesses. For the viewing public, can you define what you're talking about when you're saying large businesses and and small businesses?
Okay, our our application deals with businesses five, including the employer or less. So in this case, large businesses would be. An example would be the restaurant that may have had eight people that worked for them and they had to lay three or four people off to stay open or to keep alive, to keep working. And so those are, that's the large business, which is really a small business. The small businesses refers to the people that have a salon and rent a chair where they're a single person making an income and they were affected by the COVID shutdown, either by being shut down completely, partially, or not at all.
Thank you. So if you're waiting for a motion, I would make a motion to go ahead and approve the scoring criteria that they have set forth for Toppinish. I second that.
I have a motion on the floor from councilwoman Jimenez, seconded by councilwoman Deval to approve the scoring for. Process for.
Small business application ranking.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed?
Very much for that support. And the other thing is council needs to know what the city manager is doing and I'll be at a conference in Nashville tomorrow. Sitting right here at my desk, I start at five o'clock in the morning, so. I'll be here if you need to see me, let me know, I'll mute and you can come in, so.
You always turn the country radio station on, so.
I know it.
To feel.
Yeah.
Is that everything, Lance?
That's all, thank you.
All right, move on to item ten, that is adjourned. Thank everybody for the long evening tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
You.
Bye bye.
Good evening, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.